Okay, trustee Holland, we have about 36 guests and we do have the entire board of trustees on. We're about one minute away from six and we have reposted the live link on our Facebook page. So at any time that you're ready to start the meeting, you can take over.
Okay, I saw that my computer clock just turned on to six. So I will go ahead and bring this meeting, the regular meeting of the Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees to order. And on the agenda, it is calling the meeting to order, welcoming everyone who is participating virtually. And I will take roll call. And then after that, I will look at chat for how you are voting on any action items other than the two trustees by phone, which I will need oral votes. So trustee Decker, are you here? And Ctrl V works really well to unmute quickly.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
I am here. Trustee Kendall?
Yes, I'm here. This is Heidi.
Thank you. Trustee Lorenzen?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Newbold?
Here.
Trustee Old Person?
I'm here.
Trustee Smith?
I'm here.
Trustee Sturbis?
I'm here.
Trustee Vogel?
Here.
And trustee Wade? Trustee Wake? Trustee Wake, are you here? I can see your icon is here. Oh, she just indicated in chat that she is here. So we are ready to begin with the pledge of allegiance. And I believe we do have the flag, so if we can stand. And if Dr. Watson would give us the pledge, and I don't know that we all need to talk over him, but we would appreciate that, Dr. Watson. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisibly, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we are looking at number three on the agenda, which is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. There is one revision that just happened late this afternoon, under 9A1, which was to accept the audit report. Stephanie Fries had a family emergency and she's Anderson Zermulon. So we will move that to our next board meeting, so that will not be discussed tonight. Everyone got that change? I think I'm not seeing any no's in chat. So then we move on to, there are no minutes to prove under 4A, so we move on to 5. So I do have a bit longer of an explanation about public comment, both on agenda items and non-agenda items. And just because we're working in spiritual communication mechanism, so bear with me for a little bit. There is going to be a regular board meeting tonight, followed by a work session. During the regular board meeting, we'll take public comment on non-agenda items at both the beginning and the end of the board meeting portion of this section. We will take public comment in the normal fashion on items that are on the agenda. That is, after there's been board discussion on an agenda item or information item, I will ask if there's any public comment on that agenda item. Item. Following the board meeting, the board is going to move into a work session. There is no public comment during the work session. Therefore, if you have any public comment regarding the topics found in the work session, I think, please make them as public comment on non-agenda items either at the beginning or the end of the regular board meeting. That being said, as you may have read or seen posted, the board will be holding a special board meeting this Friday, May 1st at noon. One of the two agenda items at that meeting will be for the board to vote on whether or not to return MCPS students to the school buildings. And there will be time for public comment on that agenda this Friday. And we would certainly bring the public comment at that time on that agenda item. I also wanted to let everyone know that the trustees have access to. And we've all been reading the public comments submitted via email or in some other electronic fashion. And members of the public can continue to submit public comment, especially as to those comments relating to the agenda item that we'll be discussing on Friday. And so keep those coming in if you need to make public comment on that agenda item for Friday. And then finally, just the mechanics of how to make public comment on either agenda or non-agenda items. Since we are holding this meeting virtually, but still taking minutes, if you make public comment, would you state your first and last name? And if either has an unusual spelling, please provide that spelling. And if you represent an organization, please identify that organization. We also ask that you keep any public comment to three minutes or less. And one of the staff will be helping me keep that time so as to ensure the comments comply with that request. And then finally, as to how to be acknowledged if you want to make public comment. If you're connected to the meeting and can type into the chat box, if you chat comment, please do so. I'm going to be keeping track of the chat box. And so we would, once I see you want comment, I will indicate by name or by phone number that person. And then if you want to make public comment and by unmuting your phone, a staff person is going to keep track of the unmuting of the phones, since I can't do both phones and chat. And she will let me know that someone whose name or phone number wants to make public comment because that phone has been unmuted. And then finally, I think if you're calling in, then if you unmute your phone, we would be able to see that, my staff member would be, our staff member would be able to see that, so that we would then identify you by the last two digits of your phone number to make public comment. Is that adequate, Patton, to explain how it's going to work?
Okay. Yes, it is. Thank you, Marcia. And for those that have joined on the phone, we have about six of you. I'll repeat this again, but if you do get to the point where you want to unmute, you would dial star six on your phone keypad. You don't need to do that right now, because we'll wait for those that are in the Google meeting to make their comments and then we'll go through a round of acknowledging those on the phone.
Okay, with that being said, I'm going to check in chat and see if there's anyone who wants to make public comment on a non-agenda item. I don't see anyone typing into chat at this point. Patton, would you mind checking to see if anyone who's connected to us has unmuted their microphone? So as to see if they want to make public comment on a non-agenda item.
Sure, at this point, if you're on the phone and you'd like to unmute, you dial star six on your phone keypad and then we'll recognize you by the last two digits of your phone number.
Okay, seeing none. And there was a question that came in. People wanted to know what time the meeting was on Friday. And I thought I had said it is beginning at noon, but if I overlooked stating that it is at noon on Friday under the same platform. So seeing no public comment on non-agenda items at this time. And as I indicated, there will be a spot for public comment at the end of the board meeting section. So now we go on to, and there is written correspondence. And we have also received a number of emails that have gone into a portal so that the trustees can access them as well. So we move on to 6A, which is the health insurance trust fund report. It's found on page four. It is the routine health insurance trust fund report for the month of March 2020. And the second report is announcements from superintendent Dr. Watson. You have announcements.
I do. Thanks very much, trustee Holland. Just a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board. First of all, just really appreciate all the folks that are participating virtually this evening. Thanks for tuning into our board meeting. Appreciate your participation. I also wanted to say thank you to Chair Holland. This moving to a virtual format is never easy. And we, you know, we worked out through some of the kinks. And I think Chair Holland has just done an excellent job sort of shepherding us through this process. So thank you to Marcia for chairing these meetings in a virtual format, which is not easy. And then the last thing I would mention, as the board may recall, typically our second meeting in April, we spend the time up at Sealy Lake. And we were unable to do that, obviously, this April. But this meeting would have been up at Sealy Lake. We appreciate the hospitality up there and folks arranging that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that this year, but we'll be sure to get back up to Sealy as soon as we can. But just wanted to say thank you to the community and the staff up there for setting that up for us. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just dropped my agenda, so let me just grab it. Onto the quote, apologies for that. So now we come to the consent agenda, item number seven. These items that go on the consent agenda are typically the kind of things that the board sees in routine fashion, sometimes once a month, sometimes quarterly. In this case, it is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports. It's found beginning on page six. They are the February and March 2020 expenditure and revenue reports. Because it's on the consent agenda, the trustees won't be discussing them, but we do take public comment. So first, is there a motion to approve the revenue and expenditure reports for February and March 2020? I'm looking in chat to see if there's a motion. Trustee Lorenzen has moved and trustee Old Person has seconded the motion. And as I indicated, there is no board discussion. Is there any public comment on this item? I'm not seeing anyone typing into chat. So all trustees in favor of approving the motion to, or the motion to approve the item on the consent agenda, just either type in Y or N for yes or no, if you're in support of the motion. And I will also remember to type my in as well. And so let me catch. I see nine people have voted. So I'm just trying to see who. Trustee Vogel and trustee Kendall? Thank you. That's what I'm forgetting. Thank you. That's why there's only nine. Trustee Vogel, how do you vote on the motion? Thank you so much, Patton. Patton, could you remind on the phone how to get?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Vogel is a yes?
Thanks. And trustee Kendall? Trustee Kendall just dialed star six.
Yes?
Thank you. And so we'll move on to apologies. We'll move on to eight, old business personnel negotiations and policy is to approve on first reading the board policy 3417 communicable diseases. As the trustees will recall, we did see this board policy presented, but we had questions and therefore sent it back to administration to work with board counsel and Linda Simon to come up with some additional clarifying language. So Dr. Watson, I think you'd be introducing Linda Simon. And I'll let everyone know that Megan Morris is also on this call or in this virtual meeting.
Thank you, Chair Holland. As the trustees will remember, we have this policy before you. I believe it was maybe the second meeting of February. Trustees had a lot of questions about it. It was a recommended policy from the Montana School Boards Association. And Linda went back and worked a little bit with our own legal counsel to refine the policy. What you'll see on page 18 of the agenda is the original policy and some of the suggestions we made as far as changes go. And then on page 17 is the policy we're recommending for posting. There is one correction that I want to point out. If you look on page 17, there's a strike through in the fourth paragraph, advice of public health officials, there's a strike through of health. And either Linda or Megan can clarify. I believe that was meant to be removed, but they can clarify that. But Linda Simon, our head district nurse, and Megan Morris is on the phone as well from our legal counsel. So Linda, is there anything else she would add, or Megan?
I think this will be much clearer. And I'm going to turn it over to Megan to explain changes that are there. But I do think it will be clear and take care of some of the issues that were brought up previously.
Thank you, Linda and Dr. Watson. Linda and I took a look at the policy after your last board meeting. And I understood that there were several questions. One of the questions was relating to a note in the draft policy about the meaning of communicable disease. I'm recommending that you actually eliminate that language. For one, that's not a typical format of any policy is to put a note in there. And it's not actually typical to, we don't usually define terms. We usually just cite the law. I am concerned because the definition cited in the law, that 37.114.203 arm actually doesn't exclude the regular flu from its definition. So the note isn't even really accurate as far as how it cites the law. So I would recommend getting rid of that. And I also recommend, just for purposes of repetition, to get rid of that first full paragraph beginning in all proceedings. I believed it was covered elsewhere. And the only part that was not was added actually to the second, now second paragraph, the part about OR has suppressed immunity. That was the only piece of that first full paragraph that I found was not covered already in the policy. Actually, the health that Dr. Watson mentioned in that fourth paragraph, that was removed or that was already striked through when I reviewed it. I have no problem with it, but I don't know if Linda has a comment on that.
I guess I was thinking that was your strike through. Yeah, I was thinking that was your strike through, so I may be confused about that. I don't remember it being stricken on the first reading.
Um, the only other thing I'd add is a lot of the language in the last three paragraphs are actually mostly covered in your student records policy as far as what information can be shared. Certainly, the language can stay in there, but it's not required by any means. And that's why I added the reference to your board policy 3600 on student records.
I think I'm comfortable with the cross-referencing and keeping the language in. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about that. And you're thinking both Linda and Megan is to take, delete the word health.
I have no recommendation because already taken in there. And so I just believed, because in the version that they sent me from your last meeting, it had health already stricken through. I have no objection to adding it. And I'm wondering if maybe because it's beyond public health officials, certainly right now, we're in a situation where the guidance that we've been operating under is not by the health official, it's by the governor. Um, so I can see the need to expand it beyond public health officials. But, you know, the future obviously is unknown and maybe it will go back to public health officials. So I certainly would leave that up to the trustees to determine.
Okay, I think striking it at this point, just because there are different levels of directives that are coming in. So are the trustees okay with striking the word health at this point? And let me just get into chat so I can see. It looks like the answer is yes. And so therefore, let me get back to the part of the agenda. Are there any questions for either Megan or Linda or Dr. Watson?
Marcia, trustee Newbold has a question.
Okay, thanks. I didn't see, it's not, oh, thank you. It was higher up than I was looking. Trustee Newbold?
Thanks, I jumped again. I just had a question about that first now full paragraph. It references public health and medical communities in assessing the risk. But just didn't know if there was a distinction between public health officials and public health and medical communities up above, if we wanted to be consistent, or if there was a reason that maybe it was worded that way.
Trustee Newbold, I can't really hear you.
Yeah.
Your microphone isn't working very effectively, so I don't think you could share your question or comment.
I think I heard most of it. I think what she was asking in that first paragraph, Marcia, is that we refer to public health and medical communities in that first paragraph? Do we need to be consistent and just say public officials? Or are we okay using public health in that first paragraph?
Um, my recommendation, again, given what we know currently, is that these recommendations now can come from more than the public health authorities. So I do actually think it would be a good idea to change that to the district will rely on advice of, I would take out the of public officials and medical communities.
Okay, so we would substitute public, we would substitute health for officials. Is that what you're suggesting, Megan?
It is.
Okay. Okay, so let me get back to chat again. I just lost chat. There. So with those two changes, are the trustees okay with the second change? I'm just looking in chat to see if anyone is not okay. Changing the word to officials. Looks like it's generally okay. So then are there any other questions for either Dr. Watson or Megan or Linda? Just looking in chat. Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the first reading of board policy 3417 communicable diseases and authorize its posting for public comment. And then it would be brought back to approve, depending on public comment, at the second reading on May 26. Is there such a motion? Trustee Lorenzen moved and trustee Old Person seconded the motion. Is there any board discussion? Not seeing anyone asking for public, for board discussion. I have board comment. I want to thank both Linda and Megan for working on this policy and for being responsive to the concerns, or at least the questions that we had when we saw it in its original form. So I really appreciate the time that both of you had put into this revision. So thank you very much. Is there any public comment on the motion on the floor? I'll leave it to you, Patton, to see if you can tell. There doesn't seem to be anyone in chat indicating public comment.
There doesn't appear to be any phone, but just to check, if there's anybody on the phone that would like to make public comment on this agenda item, please press star six on your keypad. When you unmute yourself, we will call on you by the last two digits of your phone number.
Is there any indication of anyone unmuting, Patton?
No, there is not.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion that's before us, please indicate by typing in Y for yes or N for no.
Vogel is a yes?
Thank you, trustee Vogel. Trustee Kendall? Trustee Kendall? Trustee Kendall, can you hear us? I, maybe we've lost trustee Kendall? I'm just looking for the last two digits. Oh.
Yep, still on the line. Just a reminder, if you need to unmute trustee Newbold or, excuse me, trustee Vogel or trustee Kendall, just press star six.
And we have trustee Vogel's vote, so we are waiting to hear from trustee Kendall. Patton, do you have any way to override?
I don't. Once she is muted, she can only unmute herself.
And I just got a notice that she's left the meeting. So maybe she's going to try to call in. So for the purposes of the minutes, then trustee Kendall has not voted on the motion. And otherwise, yes, we have a quorum. We've got 10 of the 11 trustees here, so we are maintaining our quorum. And so the motion is approved by the 10 trustees who are present. And trustee Kendall had left the virtual meeting. So then we'll move on. And as I indicated, 9A1 is to accept the audit report, but we will move that to hopefully next, the next board meeting. Then we move on to the DLA grant project, which is the Sealy plumbing upgrade. And it sounds like Pat and Burley have the background information on that. I think that
Yeah, thank you.
I for, is that right?
Yes, that's right. So this is, I'll just introduce the topic and then Burley can describe where we're at. It's unfortunate, we were unable to be in Sealy Lake for the meeting. The grant funds arose out of the department or the delivering local assistance grant that was awarded through the Department of Commerce. This was a competitive grant for local governments who were experiencing growth or decline in natural resource development and fit Sealy with the timber industry impacts. And the projects that that are applicable are infrastructure-type projects. And for us, it was a drinking water project. Specifically, we discovered lead in the pipes of Sealy Lake back in 2017 and 18 following some testing of all of our schools. And the source of the contamination is believed to be solder that was used in the pipes. And so we were fortunately awarded a grant and the funds will be used to replace about 3,200 linear feet of piping in that school building. So we're getting it kicked off and Burley's going to give you an update on the project. So Burley, you want to describe the project?
Yeah, thanks, Pat. So we're currently working with DC Engineering and with designing this construction work. We will be hopefully putting this project out for bid in mid to late May. And we would have a contractor selected for the board to approve, hopefully, that first board meeting in June. We are currently working with an abatement company right now to schedule abatements of a lot of the piping that will be removed so we can get ahead of the game before the contractors hired. And then we're working through the C's of documentation that is required for this project in order to meet the requirements for the grant. So we're continuing to familiarize ourselves with that. The one main thing I'm picking out of it right now is a lot of the information such as The one main thing I'm picking out of it right now is a lot of the information such as selecting an engineer and getting hazardous assessment is due in September, so we feel like we're very ahead of the game. And we plan to have a project done before fall of school, so we should have the project complete before most of the information is due to this date. So we feel like we're in a really good spot with this project. It's a very exciting project.
Do any trustees have any questions for either Burley or Pat? I'm looking in chat. And if either trustee Kendall or Vogel do, if if Hatton sees you, I'm muting your phone, she'll let me know. Okay, seeing no questions, then the recommendation is that, I guess it's information only, so there is no motion to consider, but we would take public comment on this information only item. And again.
Marcia, I'm just going to interrupt one moment. I apologize, trustee Holland. It looks like trustee Kendall has unmuted her phone.
Okay, trustee Kendall, do you have a question?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Okay. So it is unfortunate that we didn't get to hold this meeting in Sealy like we had planned and you know, just, and I want to thank Pat and Burley for finding, for applying for these funds. I really appreciate that you saw that they might be available and that they were applicable to Sealy Swan, so thank you both for doing so. And it looks like trustee Kendall has left the meeting again. At least, that's what my computer just told me. So thank you. Any other trustee comments? Any public comment, even though this was information only, I think I'd asked, but I'll just double check. Seeing none. Then we come to updates. So the first is the bond expenditure update that is found beginning on page or found on page nineteen. Pat, do you want to walk us through what's in that report?
You bet. Thank you. So as reported in the past, we're, we're winding down on our bond projects that relate back to the bond issue from two thousand and five, the voted election, and then the first issue in two thousand and sixteen. You'll see the report on page nineteen. Just had a couple of things to, to point out. First, under the description at the top of each category for elementary and high school, it's described as, as under the school, it's described as district, so high school district or elementary district. And I think that I had erroneously reported some information about where the construction manager costs were located in a prior conversation with the board. And just wanted to be clear that under soft costs, under that district row, that line item, that's where you'll see the costs associated with our construction representatives. It's not entirely related to construction representation work, but that's the bulk of those costs under, under that category. So I want to make sure that was clear. Otherwise, under those district row, that district line item, you'll see construction, which is primarily a new phone system and some storage and supply costs related to construction. And then technology is the primarily the, the big build out of the fiber network, the, the WAN. The, the main projects that we have underway in the elementary are the CS Porter Construction and in the high school, Big Sky High School. And so at this point, if you look at the total expenditures, we are exceeding the original par value of the bond issue, which is not to be alarmed by. We have a bond premium that, that Burley and his team are expending in support of, of bond related projects. And so we're still targeting the end of the summer to be virtually wound up with these projects and, and it's been a pretty amazing effort to date. In May, actually this month, we are planning to have Holting here to, to make a overall presentation, but have moved their presentation to May and they'll provide a pretty extensive upgrade on the projects that were completed on all the schools and should be interesting for, for the board, including a new board members. So that's, that's my report.
Thanks. Any questions for Pat on this report? I'll check in chat and if Hatton, you can check on unmuted phones. Oh, trustee Sturbis has a question and trustee Smith has a question. Trustee Sturbis?
I was just curious, are something going on now with my kids in the school?
Yeah, construction is still going on in the schools. I think that's what the question was and, and it is, yes.
Thank you.
And trustee Smith, you had a question?
I, I just wanted to thank Pat for, for that. And I guess I just wanted to touch on, on the first part that you were talking about with the yeah, I think you called it the management part of it, and, and what you were saying was the soft costs in both districts are, are management cost, which to me looks like roughly five million bucks on a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. So we're looking at less than three percent. So I, I, I guess I wanted to understand that that is I think what I'm pointing out, I hope, is that that was, that was a good deal, and I, and I, I think that it was money well spent. Is that the consensus from the people that were involved in the, in the bond project?
Yeah, and that's excellent math, Mike. Yeah, the, the fees are just over two percent and plus cost, but yeah, we couldn't have accomplished this undertaking without their efforts, the efforts of Holting. And really, from an administration of project standpoint, they, they took that on as, as our representative on these projects and, and in doing so, pulled that away from architects. And so when we negotiated our fees to architects, then that, that part was, was, was peeled off, given their work for us. So we couldn't have completed these projects as timely as we have, which, which resulted in some, some early savings on these projects and certainly they've assisted in keeping these projects on time and on budget. So we're very thankful for, for their efforts on our behalf.
Thank you.
Are there any other trustee questions? And Hatton, let me know if trustee Vogel or trustee Kendall have unmuted their mics.
I don't see anybody unmuting at this point.
Okay, and it's information only, but any public comment? And I'm not seeing anyone typing into chat. Hatton, any indications of public comment from anybody?
None of our phone lines are unmuted. Just as a quick reminder, if you'd like to make public comment, press star six to unmute.
Thank you. Then we move on to the technology fund update, which is, the report is found beginning on page twenty. It covers July first, twenty nineteen through March thirty-first, twenty twenty. And Ray, do you want to let us know what is of significance in this report?
Sure. Of significance, I would say, is there's still a large portion of the technology fund remaining for this year, and that is because I have not yet brought to you the annual device replacement request, which will be coming on the next regularly scheduled board meeting. So every year, we replace on a five-year cycle staff and student computers. So there will be a significant ask coming at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Of one more note, I would say that we'll be carrying over in the tech fund, rolling over a portion because we, due to COVID, we did not implement infinite campus. We are not going to implement infinite campus, our new student information system this summer. And just due to a myriad of, of issues with, related to the pandemic. So we will be implementing summer of twenty twenty-one, so we'll carry that money forward as well. So you will see a little, a, a large chunk moving forward. And I saw trustee Smith.
Has a question.
Question, yes.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. I, I did notice in the update from all of this distance learning and stuff that we're going through, that there was a lot of discussion about equipment that was given out. Is this affected this year's budget? Are we going to adjust next year's budget? I guess I'm, I'm just, my question is, how are we going to look at this moving forward? Did, did we have a good foundation for this? I know that there were some people that weren't able to get it, but, but it sounds like we got a lot of equipment out and, and did pretty well. So can, can you give us a little bit of update that?
Definitely. So I'm going to get my cheat sheet here. We were able to hand out one thousand four hundred sixty-five devices. Some of those were our, our devices that we pulled from staff and student rotation last year, so they were year six devices. And then we started to dip into our Chromebook carts at all of our schools. So we took about nine hundred Chromebooks from our schools and we're lending them out to students. We will expect to get those back. I will be purchasing extra Chromebooks because I know that there, there could be damage as a result of this, so we will have some backup. And then with that, if we need to use them again in the future for another situation where we need to shift to remote learning, we'll have a lot of extra Chromebooks for that. Those will be pushed out to schools. We won't keep them in, in the business building, in, in the tech department. We'll make sure that they're in use in school, but I do, I do want to say that I plan on purchasing about twenty percent of what we've already given out, just in case we have lost or damaged materials.
That, that's awesome. And, and I really appreciate the, the effort that it took to get all those out and, and thank you for, for, for adding that up. Thanks for doing that.
No problem. I have a great team. They really worked hard and they, they moved out a lot of devices in a very short amount of time. I'm super proud of all of them. I just want to acknowledge that trustee Decker said one thousand six hundred, one thousand four hundred sixty-five, wow, in the comment.
Yes, and we, we too are very proud of you and your staff. Thank you for doing that. Any other trustee questions? I'll look in chat and Hatton, if you can look on the, on own line trustees. Seeing none.
No has unmuted.
Okay, and it's an information only, but any public comment? I'm not seeing any. So with that, we'll move on to the transportation fund update. So Burley, you're talking on this in the next subject, so take it away.
Yeah, thanks. So on page twenty-two has the transportation report, quarterly report. To date, if you look at the bottom there, we are fifty, fifty-six percent today on elementary and sixty-five percent of the day on secondary. That's a little bit lower than we're typically used to this time of year, based off of this COVID nineteen and the transportation is, has not been occurring. We are currently working with beach transportation on what, what we can do to, to do for payments to ensure that we keep people employed at beach. We're putting that plan together and that'll be something that we'll present back to the board, uh, once that plan's put together for how the rest of the year looks with, with transportation fees. As you know, we use, we use about nineteen routes, I believe, for our meal preparation and meal delivery, not preparation, I apologize, for delivery. We're delivering, I believe superintendent Watson mentioned the last, last board meeting, about twenty thousand meals a week. And so we'll continue to use those at regular route rates. And then, like I said, we'll kind of report back to the board once we, once we decide how we're going to work out the rest of the year for beach transportation.
Any questions for Burley? I'll check chat. Seeing none. Any indication from the trustees on the phone?
No one has unmuted.
Thanks. So I will just say thank you for all your work you're doing. We recognize that beach is a critical partner with the school district. And the fact that school bus drivers are a specific commodity, commodity that we don't want to lose. So thank you for working on this plan. And we'll look forward to seeing it when it comes back before the board. So thanks, Burley. And then we move on to the building reserve fund.
Yeah, thanks. So this is on page twenty-four for the, the high school. I'm sorry, let me get it wrong. For the elementary building reserve. Had a quarter of nineteen thousand one hundred eighty dollars, which leaves a balance of just over eighteen thousand dollars in the, in the elementary reserve. Seems like we haven't talked about this for quite a while, but this is a reserve that expired in two thousand and sixteen that we've continued to really micromanage very tightly, so we can make it last as long as we could. Of course, the bond has helped incredibly with, with the ability to the older things that we've had continued routine issues with, so it's been able to help out and offset some of those costs. And I could answer any questions on that list if anybody has any, what to explain a little bit more in detail if you'd like.
I, I have a comment, Burley. And it's the same one that I always make. I want to make sure that we recognize that we do not have building reserve after this and with all the money that we've just invested, we need to keep this at the forefront. I know there's a lot of other stuff going on, but I really think that investing in some small investments now would pay off a lot later, so that some other generation doesn't have to go through a hundred and sixty-five million dollar bond. So let's hope that either this board or the next board looks at renewing or, or starting up a new building reserve.
Thanks. Any other trustees have any comments or questions for Burley? I'm not seeing any, and I'm not hearing from Hatton. So we'll move on to personnel negotiations and policy. And B one is to approve first reading board policy eleven twenty, annual organization meeting of the board of trustees. And thank you, Pat, for noticing that we needed to clean up this board policy. So if you want to just let us know the recommendations that you're making, they're fairly self-evident, but if you don't mind, just, you know, letting us know what we're going to be changing.
You bet. Thank you. So on page twenty-six, you'll see the strikeout version of the policy. And the, the main change was the, to be consistent, compliant with state statute, and that's going from a fifteen to twenty-five day period after the election for holding the organizational meeting. The as Chair Holland mentioned, the other changes are consistent with the, the, the policy proposed or recommended by the Montana School Boards Association and, and I think are, is basically are more cosmetic, but also works better. And so specifically, if you look at the, the reference to one-year term rather than until the next organizational meeting, that language is, is more consistent with, with statute. So as trustees serve their term, they serve until the next organizational meeting, so it's also consistent. And, and then the strikeout at the bottom. I, I don't know that we have bylaws per se and the policies referencing that they continue year to year and, and, and tell changed. To a certain degree, that's addressed in policy thirteen ten, which talks about policies as being under the purview of the board and subject to annual review by the board. And so we've already talked too about policies that have a term date, these emergency policies. So striking that was consistent with the MTSBA, but also I think a, a good move here. So mostly just a bit of a cleanup of the policy.
Thanks. Any questions for Pat or comments? Yes, I appreciate you striking that last sentence. It seems like it's in the wrong place at the wrong time and. It seems like it's in the wrong place at the wrong time, and it just is more distracting, informative.
Exactly.
Anyone else looking in chat? Seeing none. And Hatton isn't indicating that it's unmuting. The recommendation is that the trustees approve for first reading revised board policy 1120, the annual organization meeting of the Board of Trustees, and authorize it for public comment. And then it will come back to um the trustees for second reading on the May 26, 2020. And it has been moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Old Person. And someone is presenting something. And I'm not sure what it is about.
Who's Nick Furrow?
Take care of that. I'll uh turn off that ability.
Thanks. And so we have a seconded motion. Is there any board discussion? I'm looking in chat. Uh Chair, it looks like Chair or trustee service has a comment. Trustee service?
Uh, I just wanted to comment that it says um approved for first reading April 14th, so that'd be April 28th instead.
I'm sorry, what question?
At the bottom, when it says policy history, it says revision presented to the board for first reading on April 14th. Should that be April 28th instead?
Yes, thank you. I was looking at the recommendation, so we make that modification.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that.
Good catch.
Any other board discussion? Seeing none and not hearing from Hatton. Um, any public comment? Seeing none in chat, and Hatton's not indicating that someone who's listening has unmuted. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve first reading of revised board policy 1120, please indicate in chat by typing in why or yes. And anyone opposed, type in no. And if anyone's taking a different position, please indicate what that might be. And then trustee Vogel?
Hi, Vogel is a yes.
And trustee Kendall? Is trustee Kendall still?
It appears that trustee Kendall is on the line. However, I'm not seeing her unmute.
She, uh, Kendall votes yes. Great, thank you. So it is unanimous as to all trustees. And then we move on to approve the first reading of board policy 2002 COVID-19 academic variance policy. Because this goes under the 1900s, we are um the recommendation is to adopt it after one reading for the purposes of um addressing COVID-19 and that these are specific as to that particular um situation we find ourselves in. So um Dr. Watson, if you want to explain what the substance of this is?
You bet. Yeah, thank you for uh considering this policy. So um I'll start by saying that um what you read in here about variances, we we already do some of this on a sort of a case-by-case basis. But this year, uh since um we've moved into remote learning, we anticipated that we may have to do this on a broader scale. Um, and so there is some differences than what what we've traditionally done regarding grading or or graduation requirements. So I wanted to make sure that we were transparent about that with trustees and ask for some flexibility around those two issues. So for the for the grading variance, uh and this is pretty common to what some other school districts have been considering. But um obviously, you know, we we give the traditional grades um that that you're familiar with. But we'd also like some flexibility to provide um some different types of grading. For example, a pass fail grade uh or perhaps a determination of proficiency and then granting credit um or awarding a no grade, which is essentially an incomplete um and allowing the student to make it up at a later time. Um, these will all have implications with uh grade point average and transcripts and and how they're implemented in particular schools. So I have developed procedures that go along with this um policy that actually spell out for each particular grade level band, how we'll approach that. So K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Um, and we've kind of worked through those procedures with our with our principals, um but wanted to make sure you're aware of of where we're headed with with that. Uh, the second piece of the policy is a graduation requirement. As you're well aware, our graduation requirements are stipulated um in in board policy and on our website. Um, what we're asking for this year is just some flexibility around the requirements. Uh, obviously, we want students to still achieve um the MCPS graduation requirements. But what we, because of the remote learning situation that we're in, what we'd like is some flexibility, provide our principals some flexibility around um issues of substituting a graduation requirement or um granting credit based on proficiency rather than seat time. That's something we've talked about before, but we just want to provide a little bit more flexibility this year only for our for our principals to to work through those requirements. Every student has a different situation. Every student may have a different need in terms of credit. Um, and so we want to just provide some flexibility for our principals to 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 allow for that. Uh, with the graduation requirements, I think it's important to note that the state of Montana has some minimum requirements, and we're not recommending to go to go below the minimum requirements. We're just asking for some flexibility around the electives that are also required for graduation. So um uh uh an example of that is the state of Montana requires four years of English. We also require four years of English, so obviously, we wouldn't provide a variance for that because that's a that's a state requirement. That's just one example. So uh with that, what what we're asking for this year is um for some flexibility around those two issues. Um, and uh again, we've developed some procedures to give our principals guidance so that these uh variances are applied equally um at all schools.
Are there any questions for Dr. Watson? Uh trustee Decker has a question.
Thanks. I think I'm unmuted. Am I?
You, you, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so my question has to do with um I think that you spoke to it a little bit, sort of how this um policy, how how this. So these are really the procedures then that would accompany the policy that we looked at? No. So these are other policies then that would give us these emergency ways. Okay, so it's more connected to the policy that we looked at last time we met, um 2420, around proficiency and student instruction. Um, so I guess I have a question then related to what the um trigger would be, if any, for this to sunset? Um, when we go into this particular way of doing things, whether this is something that would have to be renewed on kind of an academic year basis so that um or so that it'd be something that we would know rolling into the next school year if we were going to be operating under this structure, no matter what happened in terms of building use? Um, sort of what your thinking is around that for now, if we know?
Yeah, so I'll I'll answer, and then um I guess, you know, Marsha may have more guidance in terms of policy. But if you, at at the top of this policy, it basically just says that um this this is in effect for the period when we're affected by COVID-19. Um, so and that's that's kind of a broad term because as you're well aware, we could still be under the effects of COVID-19 in the fall as well. So um we've adopted, I think now, three policies under 1900. I think we adopted 1900 and maybe 1901, and now this is 1902. Um, and on Friday, I'm going to present one more, 1906. I think any of these policies would be up for discussion in the fall. And I I would recommend, my recommendation would be to bring them back in the fall and sort of give you an update, like we still believe we need to use this policy to moving forward. And then if there's pieces of this policy that um that we find as administration and as educators are really effective and in just sort of our everyday routine, then then we should write these into permanent policy under a different number. So our student policies are all under 2,000. Both of these, both of these variances could fit very well under a 2,000 series policy in the future if we decide that this is something we want to carry forward.
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that?
Sure.
And and again, we may get into more of this when we go into our work session and talk about the plan in more detail. But my question is um related to whether a policy like this, if in effect at the beginning of an academic school year, would really need to stay in effect through the duration of that school year, regardless of other what of whether other aspects of that emergency situation um sunsetted?
Yeah, that's a, that is a great question and a great observation. I would tell you that we would have to keep it in effect for at least a semester because that's the grading period for for high school students, and that's what is reflected on the transcript. So we would have to, if we decided to start the first semester next year with this, we would have to keep it in effect for at least the entire first semester before we sunsetted it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Let me move to chat. Um, trustee Old Person has a question.
Thank you, Chair Holland. Um, Dr. Watson, what are the AA schools? Are they adopting similar um policies?
Yeah, so we've chatted about that with the other double A superintendents. I think I think they're all over the map. I think all of us have considered um pass fail in some situations, uh for example, giving a pass instead of a B or a C. So um it it wouldn't necessarily impact the GPA. So one of the things that most all double As work off of is if if you have a pass instead of a B or a C, um it wouldn't affect your GPA. Um, it doesn't doesn't get averaged into the GPA. So that's just one example of some flexibility around this unique situation. Um, the other thing that I think we've all chatted about is that no grade issue. And and that we have to be real careful with the no grade because it is seen as an incomplete. And we've had a discussion of that with the other double A superintendents because when you go into the new semester with an incomplete from the previous semester, it could impact your eligibility for Montana High School Association. So we want to be real careful on how that's administered and how we proceed with that. So those are some of the conversations we've had with the other double A superintendents. I think all of them are considering variations of this. Some districts, I think, I think it was Great Falls Public School, already had a variance policy that they'd been working with for quite a few years. So um they are, they already felt like they were covered under their variance policy. We didn't really have a variance policy here in Missoula, so I wanted to introduce this one in this way.
Any other questions from trustees? And Hatton, you'll let me know if trustee Vogel or trustee Kendall are indicating questions?
I will. At this point, nobody has unmuted.
Okay, and so I do have a question, Dr. Watson. So what you're saying is, right now, this is COVID-19 specifically related and that it doesn't appear that we will have significant changes um concerning that situation by the end of the semester and that the administration would bring this back before school starts. If there's, if for some reason, there's a reason to consider to to keeping all the COVID night, the three, and eventually maybe four COVID-19 related board policies going into effect for the 2020, 2021 year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that the trustees adopt board policy 1902 COVID-19 academic variance policy after one reading, which is the reading tonight, for the purposes of establishing grading rubric for remote learning. And let me just get down into chat. Is there any motion to do so? Trustee Newbold has moved to adopt policy. Is there a second? Trustee Lawrence has updated the policy. Is there any board discussion?
Trustee Vogel has unmuted her phone.
Okay, trustee Vogel, did you want to make a comment?
Um, no, everyone else has pretty much asked what I did um or what I was thinking, uh except that it it looks as if, and just correct me if I have a misunderstanding, that this policy is in effect just for the COVID-19 emergency measure. It will um kind of be paused at the end of the academic school year, and then we could possibly revisit um at the start of the next school year uh in case we need to continue these variances. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. And also, we would probably need to revisit them just before school starts because, as Dr. Watson indicated, if if there was, for some reason, a decision by the board to continue to um have these measures in effect, they would need to be in effect for that semester. So we want to be able to give notice to everyone before some. I think that's, is that correct, Dr. Watson?
Yeah, I think that is correct. I think really, if you read the top of that policy, what we're saying is these are basically in effect during the period of time that we're we are impacted by COVID-19. And so I think that that's an excellent discussion that we'll have to have um before the school year start is is we're obviously still going to be impacted by COVID-19. And we'll have to talk about whether these policies still make sense or are still needed at that time.
Okay, and it looks like Decker has a comment. Oh, and trustee Decker said, never mind. So hopefully, it was a question that was asked and and information was provided to everybody. So is there any public? I'm not seeing any other trustee requests for comment. Is there any public comment? Um, Marissa McLintock has a question, or a, it's not a question, but a public comment. Um, it.
Hi, nice to see you all. Um, so at the middle school level, we've had a hard time reaching consensus on what engagement looks like in terms of our wording. Uh, we've come to some agreement on that, but I feel like there's still a lot of differentiation in terms of what proficiency should look like. And I don't think we've reached any sort of conclusions as to what proficiency looks like. So that's the first part of my question. Can we be consistent on that? Um, and the second part is if if proficiency is not reached, uh will we be doing measures to achieve proficiency um via summer school or something along those lines, assuming it's safe, of course?
And thank you. During public comment that we don't respond to questions, but if you do want to follow up with a phone call to Dr. Watson, he can, he, you and he would be able to have a more robust discussion on that. But we appreciate that you're letting us know that you have these, you'd like us to consider that these facts and factors. So thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet. Is there any other public comment on this um seconded motion? Seeing none. And Hatton, are you getting any indication of public comment?
At this point, no one on the phone has unmuted. But as another reminder, you need to press star six on your keypad if you'd like to be recognized for a public comment from the phone. It doesn't appear that anybody would like to be recognized.
Okay, so um all trustees in favor of adopting board policy 1902 after one reading, please indicate by typing in yes or why. And if you're opposed, type in n or no. And if you're taking a different position, please type in what that position might be. Thank you. And trustee Vogel?
Yes, it's a yes.
And trustee Kendall? I. I, since I'm in chat, Hatton, I can't see if trustee Kendall is still in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Kendall votes yes.
Thank you. So the, the motion passes unanimously. And I did want to mention one thing before I take public comment or ask for public comment and not on non-agenda items. Student trustee Isaac Odergaard, I think, has been with us. And so I'd like to acknowledge that he's. Here and I think he's still here if I switch out of chat. But anyway, I appreciate. That he has been attending our meetings virtually as well as in person. And then we come to the item number 10, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And so as I indicated at the beginning, we are going to move into a work session to discuss. In a work session, some many things that have to do with COVID-19. And as it relates to public education. And so if anyone wants to make public comment on any of the topics. That we'll be discussing in the work session, this is the time to make them. And as I also indicated, we will be considering at noon on this Friday through this platform. The question as to whether or not to reopen the school buildings. And so we will also be having public comment during that board hearing as well. So let me get back to chat. Um, Casey Blue, I think, has a comment.
And I can go first, but Michael Smith was actually in front of me.
Okay, I didn't know that he wanted to make a public comment, but I see that he does. Okay.
Okay, I can go. I can always, you know, let you go first. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for coming to this awesome forum. I know we have a lot of good company here and it might be because the chairs are far more comfortable. Um, just an observation there. Um, but in my months of watching you guys, I've noticed that you always are willing to have tough conversations. And bring up tough questions. I appreciate that about you. You have the interest of our students and staff. At heart in your discussions and your decisions. Um, I know you got a flood of emails. I think that we all did an avalanche. I think I heard them referred to as well. We all know that schools are social spaces and that we do our best to make them safe, predictable. And structured. And in this time where normal is in flux, that can be a tricky thing. So. As you go into your conversation next, which I'm very excited to see, I know we all are. I did want to leave you with a comment that's kind of stuck with me. Since we started this in March from our leading epidemiologists and infectious disease experts who are now being played by, you know, the likes of Brad Pitt. And it was pretty simple. It says that. When we put the right measures in place and make the right decisions. We actually run the risk of being accused of overreacting. And that's because when we do the right things, nothing happens. And that's the point. Making sure that we're safe. So thank you. I look forward to your conversation and yeah.
Thank you. And trustee Smith apparently wants to take off his trustee hat and make comment as a member of the public. So, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I, we, we used to have the. Comment from the board and and this kind of falls in between, but I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate. All of the public comment that Casey just referenced. Yes, it is an avalanche, but it, what it means is that this is an engaged community and we really appreciate the input. We do take it into consideration and we. It's, 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 I'll admit, it is hard to read it all. I'm working on it. I swear I'm working on it. We're trying to get through it all and as we all are. But I did want to thank not just the people that have written emails and called me, called me personally and 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 sent letters. But also the, the staff, the, the staff that have done amazing things to get to this point to keep us. As, as close as we are to normal, which is, is unfortunately a little bit further away than than we would all like it to be. I know the doctor guest and and her whole team has been really doing amazing things and I appreciate. Them and and every building principal and every building teacher. But I, I just, I just want to say that we're listening and and we appreciate it and we are going to talk about it now. We're going to talk about it Friday, but, but, but thank you all. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment from anyone that's listening in any fashion? And Hatton, you'll let me know if you see anyone on your end. Looks like Erin Fortner has a comment. If you can go ahead and make your public comment and if you can state your first and last name for the record and spell your first name, just so we know it's A A R O N instead of E R I N. Go ahead and make comment.
Gotcha. Yeah, Erin Fortner, A A R O N, F O R T N E R. Yes, I'd just like to reiterate many of the points that have been made by several teachers, staff, parents classified in the district. The concern of not being able to possibly logistically maintain. Some sort of structure in this, in, in a normal school day, given the governor's guidelines. I think that's a logistical impossibility and I think that. We're much better off planning for a future which will be perhaps. Worse if we were to listen to epidemiologists and given that grace and time where teachers can plan and our communities can maintain. That level of safety, I think that that is an order of business that we should engage in. And on a personal note, as a teacher, I, I know a lot of staff and students personally. Who are at significant risk for exposure. So on a personal level, I think that as we move forward. I think we need to ask ourselves and I think we are doing a good job of asking ourselves that, but I think it's important to always emphasize. The associated risk with anything like that. And we can look at statistics all day from county health or state health. But when we think of that on a personal level, I think it's very important to understand. The tremendous trepidation and fear that many of our staff and community members fear have. When they feel obligated to return to these buildings that may expose them to something that may cost them their lives or their, their wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Fortner, for those comments. Or is there a public comment from anyone else if you wanted to enter chat or unmute your mic so that you can see? I'm not seeing any, oh, sorry, Ty Williams. Spell your first name.
Yeah, Ty, T H A I. And I'm also a teacher with M C P S. And I would just like to ask the board if between now and the time that you vote, if you would think about the totality of our population. And I sent an article on students with special needs. That's what I teach. And so I would just ask the board to do a little bit of research on students with special needs before making the decision because that's a population that has been heavily affected. By COVID throughout the, well, the US and the world. So I'm just reaching out to the board to ask if you would just make sure that. You consider all populations and do a little bit of research on that population before you make the vote on Friday.
Thank you for that public comment. We appreciate it. And.
Chair Holland, we do have a public comment from someone on the phone, the person with the last two digits, two nine.
Um, person with the last two digits of two nine, it looks like you're unmuted. If you have a public comment, we'd love to hear it. I'm not sure. There, there's no response so far. Is there any additional public comment that you'd like to make? Oh, went back to muted. So I'm thinking, and now back to unmuted. Would you like to make a public comment? The person with the phone number who ends in two nine?
Hello?
Hello? Hi. If you can state your first and last name and spell your name if it's got an unusual spelling and then limit your comments to three minutes.
Christopher Craigwick.
It's hard to hear what you just said.
Mr. Craigwick, we can hear you. If you'd speak more clearly, you can make your public comment now.
Okay. Well, I'm an employee at the Missoula Public Schools. And I'm commenting on the issue on whether they should reopen the schools or close the schools. Um, I think it'd be best to finish the year with the remote, with the remote learning. As you know, look at this, we've been off for like, you know, we've been off for like, you know, several weeks, haven't been at the. Schools for several weeks. So, you know, I think, you know, starting fresh in the fall or next year would be a better idea.
Thank you for your public comment.
You're welcome.
And is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment? I'll check in chat again. Not seeing anyone beyond those who've already asked to comment and had the opportunity to do so.
Hello, can I take, make a public comment, please?
Yep, it looks like Amy Miller has a comment. Ms. Miller, if you want to state your name and provide public comment to us?
Hello, this is Amy Miller. Amy, A M Y, Miller, M I L L E R. I want to thank all of you for your service to the school district and especially at this crazy time. Um, I wanted to just also emphasize that I understand what a difficult decision this is. Because I know that you're hearing from all factions of the community and my main consideration is that. At this point in the school year, I feel like the teachers and the students as well are just getting their feet on the ground in terms of remote learning and. I feel like we're hitting our stride at this point and that. If we are to continue doing distance learning for the remainder of the year, I feel like we'll have a better outcome and a smooth. A more smooth transition into the new types of regulations and requirements we're going to have for students when we return in the fall. And it also gives us a greater amount of time to. Establish those protocols and teach students how to implement those factors of safety so that they protect themselves. And the, the staff and their, their family members and, and the rest of the community. And so I feel like our process of. Read, reestablishing the new normal, as I, as they say, in the fall would be a better idea than reopening now. So thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments.
Trustee Holland, we do have an additional comment from a phone caller, the individual with the last two digits nine nine and their phone number.
Yes, my, my name is Nathan Stevens, N A T H A N, S T E P H E N S. First off, thank you to the Missoula County Public School Board for making the board meetings accessible during this challenging time. And thank you also to the superintendent, the principals, the teachers and the staff. Of Missoula County Public Schools for all their efforts to keep our students engaged and learning and and parents informed as well. My family is very grateful for all your efforts. Lastly, I support continued distance learning for our students. Until unless there is a vaccine available for the public and students attending school have been vaccinated. Smart emergency management planners plan for the worst and hope for the best. I hope the school board will do the same. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you.
Are there any additional phone callers who would like to make a public comment? If so, please press star six to unmute yourself. We also have a request in the chat from R J C. If you'd like to make a public comment, please go ahead. Okay, um, Chair Holland, are you ready to move on or would you like me to continue to seek public comment one last time? Okay, it appears that R J C indicated that there was some trouble with the microphone, so that individual plans to type comments into the chat. Yes, that is possible. However, we need you to do that now so that the meeting can then move on to the next item. Yes, that would be possible.
Yes, please go ahead and type in your comments and we will all be able to see them in chat. So go ahead.
And R J C, if you could please spell out your name in your comment as well, so we can reference that in the minutes, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Well, I would suggest that the person with the initials R J C, go ahead and keep typing. Out your comments and provide your name, but it looks like Jennifer, and I don't know how to pronounce your last name, I apologize, also wanted to make a comment. So if you could unmute your microphone and if you could spell your last name, that would be helpful for our minutes.
Jennifer Robichaud, R O B I C H A U D. I want to thank the school board for the consideration and keeping our schools closed. I've been a nurse in Missoula for 10 years. I'm currently a law student. I do have a student in M C P S. My comment is more directed toward just the school board considering that not every student. Has the same opportunity for a quiet environment in their home. Fortunately, my student does have that opportunity. Students who are in smaller spaces, apartment buildings where they have family members that are being taken care of. A lot of siblings in their home may not have the opportunity for a quiet place to learn. And I just want the school board to take that into account when you're considering things like grading options and any changes to curriculum. Thank you for taking my comment.
All right, I'm trying to remember if my mic was on or off. And so it appears that. Bob Carter is R J C and I will go ahead and read his comment, which he typed into chat. And so let me. Amper back up. He, it indicates, thank you. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I thank the trustees and the employees. But I urge the trustees to use data in making their decision. And there was also a comment from Liam O'Connor, O C, O, capital C, O N N O R, which indicates. which indicates, hello, thank you for allowing us to be part of the meeting in this manner. As a parent of four MCPS students, I also support the comments to abandon in-person classes for the remainder of the year. And it is signed, thank you, John O'Connor. And let me just look to see if there's any others. And so I think those were the two that were typed in. And if anyone else has comments that they want to make in that fashion, I'll give it a minute more before we move into the work session. And as I indicated, we're still taking public comment on the agenda items that we'll be considering on Friday. So if anyone's listening here and wants to send in additional written comments or electronic comments, we encourage that. So thanks. And I'm not, oh, one more. Here's one that I'll read from Fonte Tuhy. I hope I'm pronouncing it okay, T-U-H-Y. Please find a way to have graduation for our seniors. Also, let's let the seniors be done with school if we decide not to go back to school. So thank you for that comment, Ms. Tuhy. Is there any other comment that anyone wants to make via the chat room or the chat mechanism? I'm not sure what you call it. I'm not. Oh. Let me go back so I've got the right name. Bob Carter indicated a second comment. I know the district is trying to reach out to the greatest number of students possible. Maybe 70 or 80% of those students are doing fine. But I am concerned about the 20 or 30% of students that are not succeeding with the distance learning. Is there a better option for them? Thank you, Bob Carter. So thank you for that comment. And I'll wait for a moment to see if there's any additional comment in chat. And Hatton, you let me know if you see anyone who wants to indicate any oral public comment. Sarah Burnt has a comment. So if you can spell your last name and your first name, because Sarah has variations and Burnt has a variation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Burnt, S-A-R-A-B-E-R-N-D-T. And I just wanted to comment that before students and staff return to the schools, I feel like we should also revisit policies regarding people's temperatures and escalade temperatures and sending people home because temperature variation being a part of COVID-19 and people being otherwise potentially silent carriers. There may be some sort of health policies that we would also need to address before we could attempt to return back to a school in-person policy. Thank you.
Marsha, you're muted.
Oh, did I just say a whole lot of things that no one heard? I think I did. Just looking to see if there's any other public comment, and I thanked Ms. Burnt for her comments. And Hatton, is there any indication? Anyone?
At this point, there's no one unmuted on the phone lines.
Okay. So at, at this point, not seeing any other public comment on non-agenda items, we'd be adjourning the regular board meeting and moving into the work session. I will ask if any trustees need to take a, a, a two-minute break to get a drink of water or do anything like that. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and move into the work session. So if anyone wants to take a very short break, just go ahead and type it into chat. Okay, seeing none, we'll continue ahead. So in terms of the structure of the work session, there are a number of general topics that are indicated in the background information. When I talked with Dr. Watson earlier today about the structure of the work session, one of the things I wanted to let the trustees know is that there are going to be a number of things that we as a board will be needing to decide in, in upcoming board meetings, in probably a lot, perhaps at the May 12th board meeting concerning graduation, concerning other things. And then over the course of the rest of the spring, summer, we're going to be talking about even more of the considerations about what it's going to look like come fall. So this is an opportunity tonight to start with a general conversation about some of the things that we as trustees would like the administration, Rob and his staff to know or to think about. And also a time for Dr. Watson to let us know where in the planning stages he is. So I'm going to turn it over mostly to Dr. Watson. And if you want to indicate that you want to ask a question or make a comment, I'll let you know. But really, you know, if Dr. Watson catches that too, then Dr. Watson, feel free to note that, you know, Trustee Smith has a question so that we both can make sure we're catching everyone that might want to ask a question, make a comment. So with that, I'll turn it over to you and I'll go unmute.
All right. Thank you, Chair Holland. That's a good introduction. I, I, I do think it's probably relevant and important to know that we'll be spending, you know, time this spring and over the summer to, to plan. Obviously, that's a big, that's a big undertaking and something that we've, we've already started. But what I thought we would do, I have basically three items to discuss with you. I thought maybe I'd just go through each item and maybe pause between each item to see if you have questions or comments or want to have any discussion. And I have a couple of other people that are going to help me with the first item. So the very first item to discuss with you is our remote learning plan. And you'll recall that I first presented this plan back in late March. It was a requirement of the governor's office to have a plan in place. Your plan had to address four things, your off-site learning instruction, your school meals, your services for students with disabilities, and then other services that we provide to students. So we had planned for those things back in late March. And then what I did is I just took that plan and added some updates. So you have an idea of where we're at currently. All of this starts on page 29 of your board agenda. And I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I do want to highlight a couple for you before I turn it over to a couple other people. So it was already mentioned, I believe, in an earlier update from Ray, but I had the number wrong. We've passed out over 1,400 devices to our students. So I think that's encouraging, knowing that we're getting those devices to, into the hands of students that need them. The other big stumbling block that we had was related to internet access. And when we first started looking at this, we thought maybe Spectrum would, would be able to help us with some internet access for some of our families. And I think that they did, but that reached a capacity. And then we explored some other options. So Ray and her team, along with Pat's help, explored hotspots. And this took a while to get these. So this was not an easy task. I think as far in the educational world, this is just like the N95 masks, where we struggled to get a hold of these, but we did, we did get 100 hotspots. And we're looking at ordering some more. And what a hotspot is, is basically provides family with internet access in their home. We're covering the cost of that for a couple of months, just to make sure kids have access to internet. We can control the filters on that and the timing and the, and the bandwidth and all that. Ray can explain more on that if you have questions. But long story short, we, we secured some hotspots. They all got taken up fairly quickly by principals who knew of families that needed them. And so we know that we're providing that need and we're looking at ordering 25 more. Another update that I just wanted to highlight, we mentioned the meal delivery already. But I think it is relevant to point out that, as Burley mentioned, 20,000 meals a week through our bus delivery system and kids picking up meals at the school. And I think that's really encouraging that we continue to do that. I'll also just remind folks, if you didn't know, this Friday is National School Food Service Day. So we'll have to say a special thank you to our food service workers on Friday, who've done just an outstanding job getting our, our food delivery up and running. I'm going to let Karen in just a minute talk about some services for special education students and how those have grown and improved over the last few weeks. And as we learn more and how to serve more students, I think that we're doing a great job there. I also, before we get too far along though, I thought it would be helpful for the trustees to see maybe one or two examples. I know Elise has several examples she could show you. But just in the interest of time, Elise, if maybe you could just show one or two examples. I think Hatton's going to share the screen. I just wanted the trustees to kind of visualize what it might look like for a student in remote learning.
Hi, thank you so much. When Dr. Watson tasked me with trying to bring to light some of the great things that are happening in the classroom, I shared a presentation that had many, many items on there because I think it's really exciting to see how our teachers are being so creative and, and all the great ways that they are connecting with our kids. And I'm just really proud and humbled to be representing some of this work. So I'll quickly go through the slides. And there'll be some that we can skip over, but it'll certainly give you a visual of some of the great things that are happening across MCPS. So, and in saying so, I really want to echo and support a lot of what we've heard from public comment about how our teachers are truly hitting that stride with their kids and they're connecting in these meaningful ways. And it's really, really exciting. So there's two main objectives of remote learning that we set forth back in March. And one of them was to engage our students in meaningful personalized manners. We know that remote learning can be very isolating. And so our teachers have been working extremely hard to find ways to engage our kids, to connect with them, make sure that they're doing okay, and that we have that kind of personalized connection as much as possible in the remote learning atmosphere. The second thing is that we really wanted to continue to gather student feedback so that we know that kids are learning, what they are experiencing, and how to celebrate that learning throughout this experience when things can feel so disjointed. So the first opportunity we have is to share a little kindergarten classroom where we see how our teachers are identifying ways to not only embed English language arts standards, but connect them to science standards. So here, you see a little girl showing off with exactly what's happening around machines and weather and showing off those artifacts. This is a standard that is hit at this moment in kindergarten. And it's exciting to see that level of proficiency and engagement and just overall excitement that our kids are showing through this work. Another example is in fifth grade, we see another way that our teachers are showing a connection between science and English language arts. You see kids being really proud of what they're creating at home. And in this case, this fifth grade team was using padlets. So our teachers are getting used to using a wide variety of technical kind of platforms and ways in which to gather that feedback. Another way in this fifth grade class, they are referencing our Indian Ed for All Content Standards. So wanting to make sure that we are hitting our standards, but doing so in a really meaningful and personalized way. Here, some kids are not only building some, some rovers, but they're thinking about zero waste. So they're finding things that are within their home and then building these rovers and then sharing them through the padlet and whatnot. And one other thing I'd say about K5 quickly is that while we're thinking about all of our kids, we have title teachers, special ed teachers who are doing reading interventions. They're using our independent reading level assessments. And we can see this in the next slide, where they're really honing in on specific skill development and then identifying how to meet with individual students throughout the week to really hone in on those foundational reading skills. So it's really amazing how our teachers are being so creative and thoughtful with connecting with our kids. I think one thing here also that is worthy to mention is that our teachers are finding ways to celebrate the learning throughout the, the week. So here on Fridays, our, our students are recognized for their reading development. If we move quickly into middle school, we see some great examples of English language arts and science. This is a standard that is typically hit at this moment in the school year. And we see a teacher really recognizing how to get to that citing evidence and annotating in something that would typically happen face-to-face in the classroom. What I appreciate about the comment from the teacher in looking at this is that we have had to reflect a lot on the way in which we are delivering teaching and that we've had to slow the pace down and we've had to find different ways to connect with our kids. And part of that is because we're also teaching really, really important and relevant technology skills. So instead of just using a highlighter, kids are learning to use the, the text boxes and the, the tools that are available online. And I think that is such a meaningful silver lining that has occurred through this remote learning setting. I'm going to skip through these next couple of slides, but what you see in science is a wide variety of ways in which we're using online materials. But then connected to that is, secondly, how our kids are coming together in small group to talk about that work together and really collaborate, which is something that we value across all of our classrooms. And even still in six eight, we have interventions happening. So here's a perfect example of a math intervention where a child was having some help with an online component of our math curriculum called Mathia. They worked with the teacher, solved the problem, and then was so proud of it. They took a picture and sent it to the teacher. So great ways in which we're connecting and celebrating those learning moments across the way. And that even extends into high school. What I love about the slide is the teacher added a significant amount of visible ways in which our kids are learning and solving problems, especially when algebra is getting so hard at this moment in the year. And just the connection, the emails, the ways in which we are able to see that learning occur, I think is really worthy of mentioning. And last, we see an example from a grade 12 English Language Arts classroom where here, especially at the high school level, kids are given more choice in how they want to show their learning and what things are meaningful for them and how we even connect with the community. So here's ways in which these seniors connected with the members of the Springs community here in Missoula. So in sharing all of this, I just think it's a great opportunity to highlight all the different ways our teachers are being so creative while still hitting, you know, the standards and things that we expect from teaching and learning. And they're doing so in such a personalized, meaningful way. Honoring those two objectives of really connecting and engaging with our kids and seeking that back and forth feedback. And so at this point, I just wanted to make sure to thank some of the teachers, all of the teachers that helped to provide the content and the screenshots and just all of the great insights that they are experiencing along the way. I really am honored and proud of the work that they are doing. And it's really something that is commendable. So I thank you for your quick time. This presentation can certainly be shared. And at this point, taking the notion of what happens for all kids can then be translated over to Karen to see what happens specifically for some of our students who are being screwed on an IEP through Special Education Services.
And so Trustee Smith has a question?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't, you wanted to cross over to Karen yet.
I'll wait till the end. I'll let Karen go ahead and ask.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. I thank you for this opportunity to share a quick glimpse into special education remote learning. First, a special shout out to Jenny Haynes and Brenda Sweeney, along with all of our special education teachers, specialists, support staff. Our staff are doing an amazing job of helping kids with IEPs keep moving their learning forward with individualized contact or engaging learners in groups in Google classrooms and through Google Meet and through Zoom. So check out the kinder, the early kindergarten teacher, Lisa Lang. And in the upper right-hand corner, you see our language interpreter, Carrie Kovachovich. And we can see how together they're presenting a reading, doing a reading book to all the kids in the early kindergarten class. In another situation, I recently heard about a fifth grader whose world really came together each morning at 10 o'clock with his resource teacher. According to his mom, this was the factor that made online distance learning click for him so that he became excited and interested in completing his work every day. The next couple of clips are of a kindergartner and his parents working with his teacher online. In this first picture with his mom, he's practicing counting. And in the second picture with his dad, and you can't see his dad, he is, he is making a capital I out of three strips of clay. So what we see is parents who are our true partners in this learning. Finally, although nothing is perfect in the time of COVID-19, IEPs are being completed on schedule through distance communication. Here you see a mom and a dad ready to have a meeting in the bedroom. While on the right, the kids are cooking in the kitchen. This is our new normal. So once again, kudos to our staff and families for working together to keep kids learning in this time of remote learning.
So is this a good time to allow people to ask questions? I know trustee Smith has a question. I'm not sure if it's toward Karen, Dr. Watson, or Dr. Guest, but go ahead and ask your question or make your comment, trustee Smith.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it. And it's amazing what we are seeing from the teachers, Dr. Guest and Dr. Watson and, and, and everybody showing us is. One of the questions I have, and it's, it's a bit of a hard question, and I, I'm amazed at what our teachers are doing. I have a, my concern or one of the things I'm wondering about is for those parents that feel that they need to, to, to reach out and, 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 and maybe they're not getting what they think they want for their child or for their student. How is the interaction from, with all the other interactions that teachers are doing for every student? If, if a parent reaches out to the students, to the teachers and stuff, are they getting to be responses that way? And I'm not sure if I'm phrasing that right, but maybe that's for Dr. Guest and, or Dr. Watson. But, but, but is, is the, the parents that are not maybe thinking that they're getting? And the reason I ask this, let me, let me make this clear, is that I've had a couple of constituents in the, in the, in the community come up to me and say, you know, my, I don't think that, that the teaching and learning or that the education is as good as it was before, which is hard to evaluate. But if, if they, if they have that feeling, what can they do, I think?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll answer, and I actually was going to point this out. I think we've shown you some really great examples, but I, I will be completely clear and transparent that this is not the perfect situation. And in fact, you know, teachers really work best when they're with their kids and when, when they're, we're teaching in, in person. And so I think it would, I think we'd be fooling ourselves to say that we, we've completely replaced the in-class experience because we really haven't. We've done the best we could under these situations. And I will tell you this, that we've improved since our first week to our fifth week. I know we've improved as teachers have become more comfortable and learned more and tried different things. And through, you know, through guidance, not only through teaching and learning, but also through their, their teacher teams at the building levels. They have, they've helped each other improve. And, and I think we'll always get better and we can always get better, but it's never going to replace what, what was happening in the classrooms. And we know that. What I will say for trustee Smith is just like before, any, any time a parent has a concern with an educational program that's happening with their child, their, their first, their first step is to reach out to the teacher and talk to the teacher about what's working and what's not working, what they'd like to see differently and, and, and work with the teacher. And I know all of our teachers are responding to, to parent emails or, or questions. The last thing I would say is that we've also encouraged teachers to do some unique things like office hours where they are just available at certain times for student or parent questions. And I think those things will also increase as we go along.
If you can hear me, thank you. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Guest. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. I, I would first echo everything that Dr. Watson just said. I think, you know, since the onset of this, we have always said that remote learning certainly is, is not as, as wonderful as having that face-to-face human contact in the classroom that we have with our kids each and every day. And, and just like we heard in public comment, that, that social piece to learning is so, so valuable. So trying to recreate that in a remote learning atmosphere is certainly what I think is so exciting about how our teachers are being so creative and utilizing technology in a way that connects people in a way that we didn't necessarily imagine a couple of months ago. I do want to share one exciting thing that even happened today. So we held some professional development for all of our grade one teachers. So 40 plus teachers came together in this online atmosphere. And one of the things that they were collaborating on is how to, to involve our parents and our families more and how to really connect that teaching and learning for the whole family. And it's exciting to see how our teachers are collaborating even when feeling so distant and finding ways for us to connect all of the family members in our community. And I think that really is a great example, speaking to how, how that is a value of, of the teachers and what we mean when we say teaching and learning.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I especially appreciate both of you guys answering the question that I didn't ask, because the Dr. Watson, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. And that, that's kind of what I wanted to dig it out there. So I, I appreciate you and I appreciate Dr. Guest and, and thank you for pointing that out.
Trustee Lorenzen has a question, then trustee Decker has a question and a comment. And then trustee McDonald has a question. So let's start with trustee Lorenzen.
Yeah. So I know through the years, we've sort of said, you know, every child should have an IEP, you know, in kind of a general sense. But I feel like we have 12 grades of kids that will always be impacted by the COVID year. And that it, we don't want it to hold them back, but we don't want to run over them either and tell them in a couple of years, I'll quit making excuses. So I'm wondering if we couldn't come up with the equivalent of an IEP for every child that's COVID impacted, until we're sure that all the, every, the gaps have been filled and that they're back on track. So that's my comment slash question.
Dr. Watson or, or Dr. Guest? I didn't know who wanted.
I can start with a couple of quick thoughts and pass it forward. I think you bring up a good point about how do we individualize for our children and, and really make sure that we're connecting with them and knowing where their strengths are, where their areas of continued need are, and how we help to communicate that right now, but then also moving forward to next year. And, and what I'll say is that right now amongst all of this, all of our grade level teacher teams are meeting and continuing to collaborate in their PLCs to address that issue about how are they teaching? How are they meeting the differentiated needs? And they're really calling on each other as teammates, especially in title and special education, to talk about how to provide some of that individualized support. And so I, I think much of the strength of what you're speaking to comes in those regular PLCs that our teachers are, are continuing to conduct, even with all the other challenges across the board.
Well, I, I guess, oh, Rob's going to speak. I guess, and I know that's happening right now, but I'm thinking in a year or two years, when sort of empathy fades and, but the gaps still remain in their education for having lost all these weeks. So I guess Dr. Watson's going to speak.
Yeah. I'll just add, I, I think trustee Lorenzen has a good point. It's something that we are concerned about as well. To that end, or to that point, my hope is that at the end of this school year, our kiddos would have an understanding and our teachers would have an understanding of which pieces were covered and which pieces were left out or which pieces they still needed help with. That would be communicated not only to parents in some sort of fashion, but also to the next year's teacher. So what we chatted about with, with our principals recently is a mechanism that, that we would be consistent on from school to school and grade to grade so that the, the teacher next year would have an understanding of which pieces were, were covered, which pieces were left out, which pieces a kid might be struggling with, so that they could pick up from there next fall and continue forward. I, I think, I think it's critical to understand exactly what trustee Lorenzen is talking about is we can't just assume that those gaps are going to be just forgotten about and we won't try to pick them up from where they're at and carry them forward. I, I have seen miracles in terms of what teachers can do with a focused period of time and, and, and students and understanding where their gaps are. So I, I think that, that whole philosophy around identifying those gaps and filling those gaps in the next few years will be important. So I appreciate the comment.
Okay, thanks.
Let me make, it looks like trustee Decker has a question and a comment, and then trustee McDonald.
Yeah, thanks. It's great to see so many examples of people being innovative and creative. And I just, I'm amazed by the amount of lifelong learning that's really in evidence. You know, I'm, I'm wondering how many teachers six months ago would have said, I'm not really a techie person, or, you know, I just, I like doing things the way I do them. And, and here every single teacher is finding creative new solutions to meet the kids in their class where they are and move forward together. And what an amazing opportunity that is to model for kids that we, we encounter a challenge and we stumble and we look to others to help us learn and we move on together and we keep getting better at what we do. I think all of that is amazing and speaks directly to what trustee Lorenzen is talking about in that as we go forward, it really is this picture of lifelong learning that it wasn't the question that there's a problem with you, the student, because you didn't get what you were supposed to get in fourth grade and now you're in fifth grade. We understand that these things happen in a continuum and that there's likely going to be lots of children who are kind of still hatchworking together all of those pieces in a continuum. And it's not a question of being behind. It's really being right where you are because of the experiences that everyone has had. So that's a pretty cool door to kind of be able to walk through as a team together. The question that I have is related to that too, of course, which is what, at this point, you know, knowing so much more than we did five weeks ago about what we're capable of so far and having done so much adjusting already and so much hard work, what do you see as the sticky challenges right now in either connecting with individual students or students for whom the remote learning piece isn't as maybe readily easy for them as classroom learning was and are having new challenges around that? Like what are you seeing as some of the, the next pieces of challenge that you'll be looking at? Maybe this is mostly for Dr. Guest first, but.
Again, I'm happy to start to kickstart it and then, and go from there. I have had the pleasure of joining a lot of PLCs and office hours and conversations with leaders. And resoundingly, you know, the, the, the need and focus is about keeping to that engagement of our children. And so when we talk about for the most part, yes, we have certainly been amazed by the level of reflection our teachers are doing and how they are, are really responding and being flexible and nimble to the needs that are presented. So whether it's, as I shared earlier, you know, changing the way that we anticipated pacing to go and having to slow down and reconnect and change different platforms. I think finding ways to provide choice and ways to engage our kids where they're feeling success and confidence in their learning, absolutely all that's happening. In the meantime though, there's a lot of attention and concern being given to those families that we're not connecting with or that we haven't heard from our students on a more regular basis. And much of the conversation there has been creating systems within the schools to reach out to kids, reach out to the families, make sure we're using our resources and our collective teaming to really start to address that challenge. Because ultimately, that's where the inequities start or where we could possibly lose some kids through the net. And so having that really careful attention given to that part of all of this remote learning has been certainly a part of much of our conversations, which I think really speaks to how much we care about not only the academic side to what we're doing right now, but the social emotional wellbeing of our kids. So I don't know if I'm necessarily answering your question, but that has certainly been a big chunk of the conversation that has been partnered with all of the remote learning delivery that we've been talking about and planning for.
I, I do think one of the challenges, I'm sorry, Elise. I think one of the challenges moving forward is to keep learning because as, as teachers and as educators, because we know a lot more than we did three weeks ago, but we don't know what we need to know three weeks from now. And so it's, it's hard to, to have it be a continuous learning situation. But I do think that's what we're in.
Dr. Watson, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add. I think it was, it was good.
Okay. And then trustee McDonald had a question?
Yeah. This kind of ties in a little bit with what trustee Decker was saying in a way. I was just wondering, what do we have in place or what has been suggested for the homeschooling? Now that parents are, are going back to work and that structure isn't there now that's been there during the day and what the challenges that we're going to be, you know, they're going to be facing there, what, what's any suggestions or, you know, how are we handling that?
Yeah, it's a good question. We don't know yet what impact that will have on our kiddos. I would tell you that I think it took a few weeks, but I think now I, I could say that, that our teachers have, have really engaged with the majority of their kids. There's still a handful of kids they haven't engaged with for, for whatever reason. We're trying to figure out what that is. We've, you know, our, we've talked with our principals about phone calls or home visits if necessary to sort of try to figure out, you know, what the engagement issue might be. I think we're going to have to watch that really closely in the next few weeks. If we, if we do remain in remote learning, we'll have to watch that and see if that goes up or down in terms of students not having support at home. I, I think parents have been pretty comfortable and should be comfortable reaching out to teachers and explaining if situations have changed. I've been pretty confident that our, that our principals are in tune with those families that might need some extra help. And then I, I don't think we're opposed to, to trying other things as we move along. And we can come back to the board at some point and say, you know, we think this is working, but we want to try something different. You know, just, just for example, one of the engagement issues I know that, because I witnessed it myself, there was a particular school that was serving a family that had issues around school supplies. And that was the engagement issue. And once we've provided those school supplies, it, it, that's all they really needed. And so I think that's, that, that's the trick is to, is to keep working at that and figuring out what the issues are. And we know that we're going to have to adjust as parents start to go back to work, have to adjust our, our planning and our, our outreach.
If I, I could just simply add to that, I think Dr. Watson brings up an excellent thing to underscore is that principals have really been coming together for some rich dialogue about what some of those barriers are that our families are experiencing and then how are we responding within our school communities? And I think, I think the principals are really addressing those barriers thoughtfully and systematically. So I know that conversation will continue to go deeper as we continue down this learning process together for sure. Okay, thanks.
Excuse me. Trustee Holt has two questions. So go ahead, trustee Holt.
Can you hear me clearly? I don't think my mic was working well earlier.
That sounds better than you did before.
Great. Thanks for all of the information and just thank you to all of the teachers who are doing incredible work right now, obviously. My first question is. My first question is whether we have a solid sense of the.
Christine, you've frozen up. And we can't hear you now. Do you want to type your question? Or your questions? So all trustee Newbold is typing in.
Yeah, percentage, a question about percentage of engagement. We've asked for those numbers every week from our principals. So we're we're trying to make sure that that they're continuing to watch those percentages of engagement. We we don't, what's interesting about that is the very first week, we measured engagement just by the percentage of kids that had made a connection, not whether they'd actually done any work, but if they'd made a connection. As the weeks have progressed, now we're measuring it based on what percentage they what percentage of kids are actually doing some of the work. And so we've asked for that data to be continued. My biggest goal with that data and the reason that I asked principals to look at that is I just wanted them to have a sense of which families, which kids were not engaging and try to track some of that down, but we'll continue to monitor that.
Does that answer your question, trustee Newbold? I'm not seeing a response, but is does anyone else have any questions or comments on on this particular topic? Otherwise, there are at least a couple of others to move on to.
Trustee Newbold had one other question. How does teachers' ability to conduct remote learning intersect with potential need to plan for fall? An ability to adequately plan? So I think if I understand the question, I think what she's asking is well, I guess I'm not quite sure what she's asking, so I might have to ask for clarification. But I think what trustee Newbold is referring to is next fall, we're likely still to be in COVID-19. And if so, will will we still have some remote, a need, a need for some remote learning or or are we completely back to regular school? Or how does the how does the teacher's ability impact that? I think that's what we're asking for. Like, do they have, do they have to do both? Do they have time to do both? Yeah, so here's here's what we believe. And again, this is all contingencies, but we believe that it would be very difficult for our teachers to have to do both. Online learning and in-person learning. But we also know, and this is just a prediction, but we we know that we will likely have some staff members, and this goes into our next item a little bit. We would likely have some staff members that are also medically vulnerable and could not return to a normal school setting. So one of the possibilities or the contingencies we've looked at is perhaps we can pair up those staff members to work on the remote learning piece with those kids that can't come to school either. So I don't know if it'll work out perfectly, but if we have a staff member, say, at school X that can't be in school, but they could help monitor the kids that are in remote learning at that particular school, that might be one way to continue a little bit of remote learning for those kids that are medically vulnerable and can't come back to school.
Sorry, I was hitting the button too quickly. Did that answer your question? Just you know. I don't see a response from trustee Newbold yet. Oh, okay. So trustee Newbold will follow up on Friday. So if my mic is still on, should if anyone has any other questions on this topic, should we move into the next topic and then move to the third topic? And then we can see if there are some other topics that we want to put on the administration's radar.
Yeah, so I can I can move into the next topic and try to be brief on this. I know the hour is getting late. Basically, what I wanted to do was give the trustees an idea of some of the planning that that will need to happen and some of the planning that's already happening. The chart that I provided for you on page, starting on page thirty-five. Basically, the the what I want to tell you where I got this from, the the categories and the considerations, they all came out of the governor's plan. So if you looked at the governor's plan in any detail, when he made the recommendations that schools could reopen on May seventh, these are some of the considerations that were in his plan, things that schools should plan for no matter when we reopen. So I just want to be clear, these items are important items and we need to plan for these items no matter when we decide to reopen. But I thought it would be helpful for you to see what those considerations were and also see some of our thoughts around planning for this. So I'll just, I'm just going to provide a couple of quick examples for you that we've that we've already chatted about as an administrative team, but for example, under the cleaning and sanitation categories, they rec, you know, the governor recommended keeping gyms and libraries closed unless you could guarantee that they be sanitized between groups. And so that that really will take some planning and some coordination and some, you know, obviously some protocols and procedures around cleaning. So that's just an example of what we would need to do there. This was mentioned in the public comments, so I'll just allude to it. One of the things around sick policies is a recommendation to implement temperature checks for for students or staff when they're when they're coming in the school. And that's, that's definitely doable. We would have to establish protocol around that. We would have to make sure that we have that the appropriate equipment to do so. In addition, we have have had questions regarding the personal protective equipment that we would have to provide our own staff who are potentially doing those temperature checks or screening sick children. So that's an example in that category. The limits on group size are a little bit harder to plan for, but we understand that that we're going to have to consider this. So currently, under phase one, we have group sizes of less than ten. So if you think, if you kind of play that out, none of our classrooms really have less than ten. So what we'd likely do is provide some sort of alternative schedule where we to reopen and that could be alternating day schedule in order to get the numbers down. So you maybe have a quarter of the students or half of the students in school on any given day. And then in phase two, those group sizes go up to fifty. And I just wanted to point out to the board, we do have some classes, not a lot, but we do have some classes that have more than fifty students. So we'd have to do some planning around those. And then they're probably the one that's probably most important as we continue through this is accommodating passing times and lunchtimes and recess and those sorts of things around group size. Social distancing. Again, would we require, would we need to require cloth masks or face coverings? If so, would we need to provide those for kids that couldn't bring those to school on their own? Some of those sorts of things. Really interesting comments around. I just want to point out because we talked about the transportation budget earlier, but one of the considerations is trying to reduce the number of students on the bus. So you'd have one, one student per seat. What we believe what that would mean for us is we would have to basically stagger start times during the school day or stagger the number of kids that show up at any one time. We'd have to run multiple routes in order to get some of those bus routes down to a manageable level. Let's see. The accommodations for, I mentioned this earlier, but accommodations for at-risk groups. So we have about fourteen percent of our student population that would probably fall into that CDC definition of an at-risk health group. We also know we'll have some staff members in that same percentage. And so we will need to make accommodations. And then the one that is often not spoke of, but we know exists would be could be that the the student didn't have any health issues, but perhaps there's somebody at home that does, whether it be a parent or a caregiver or an extended family. So we may need to accommodate for those students as well, who might be otherwise healthy, but have somebody at home that could be medically vulnerable. The last thing I would mention is we do have to do develop some plans around what to do when there is a confirmed case in a school. And what the governor's plan is to use the CDC guidance, which basically just says if you have a confirmed case, you should close the school temporarily, two to five days in order to do a deep clean of the school, but also to allow the the public health department time to do the tracing. So that allows the students to be out of school for a short period of time so that the public health department can figure out who the close contacts are, make contact with those students' parents to let them know that they are a close contact. And that way you don't have kids back in school infecting other kids if they are a close contact. So that's the latest CDC guidance around if you do have a confirmed case in a school, whether it be staff or student. So that's just some of the planning. Obviously, there's a lot of detail in there, but I wanted to present that to the board so you had an understanding of the things that we're starting to work on and plan for for that eventual reopening.
So if I can clarify, Dr. Watson, what you're telling us are all the things that we, as a district, we would need answers to if there was a decision to open the schools. And that's I I believe there's, you know, you've made a recommendation that we not do that, but you're demonstrating that you're looking into what it would take if we were to reopen the schools. And these are some of the obstacles, or at least it's going to take a lot of planning if 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 that were to happen. So that's why you're providing this information to us today. So we have it ahead of time before the meeting on Friday and can kind of think about it before we we come back as board to make a decision. Is that, am I stating that accurately?
That that is actually correct. And I also want to point out too that none of these things are insurmountable. We will have to plan for all of these, whether we open now or in the fall. I understand that. One thing I just want to point out to the board and and to the larger public that when we do open, it's going to look drastically different than it than it did before. You know, if we start talking about reduced class sizes or reduced numbers in the school setting because, you know, we're trying to keep those group sizes down or reduce social distancing or help with social distancing, then things are just going to look a lot different than it had before. And and it's important for us to understand that and accept that and start planning for that and and help our community start planning for that reality. Trustee McDonald and trustee Decker both had some questions.
Yeah, I had I had turned my microphone off instead of on. So trustee McDonald, you want to go ahead and trustee Decker next?
Okay, this is just, I don't know, kind of a comment of stuff, but wouldn't it, wouldn't it make sense for us to look at revisiting, going to school all year long? I mean, wouldn't that kind of help things out a bit?
Yeah, you know, adjusting our calendar or changing that to a a year-long situation is definitely something that that should be in the mix of considerations. That impacts other things, but it's not impossible. Obviously, it would impact our 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 contract that we have with our various bargaining units. And it would also impact our budget. We'd have to take into consideration that just sort of a physical, practical sense, our buildings are not set up for you know, for for some of the weather that we experience in the middle of the summer. And so we'd have to consider that as well, but I I would say it's it's something that that should be on the table for consideration. One of the things I didn't point out in here, but we'll, we can talk about more on Friday, too, is we are, we already have some summer school options, but we we should definitely look at expanding those not only this year, but in future years to sort of address some of those gap issues that were talked about earlier.
Yeah, because I'm just, I'm just concerned at, at, you know, trying to squeeze all of these these hours of schooling that the kids have already missed and and we love, you know, trying to get less students into the classes and stuff. It just, it seems like we just need more time. That's it. Thanks.
Trustee Decker, you had a question?
Yeah, thanks. I'm wondering if you, Dr. Watson, can speak a little bit to what our kind of responsibilities are as a district and how you're thinking about those in terms of meeting our responsibilities to specific students with specific challenges and our responsibilities kind of to the whole. Because when we start talking about making accommodations for particular students with health challenges or families who have health challenges, it's a very tricky situation where we could find ourselves in a position of providing inequitable education to people who are having in-person experiences versus home-based experiences. And that's not to say that one is better or worse, because in certain situations and for certain students, one might provide a better fit and one might provide a less good fit. And so how what are our kind of legal or statutory responsibilities around equity and education and how we make these decisions?
Yeah, it's a good question. I would tell you, we don't have all the details worked out on that. My belief is that we have to address student safety first. And so what that means is we have to weigh the risks of, you know, having a student in school versus not having them in school. We already have, quite frankly, I mean, even on a during a typical school year, we have students that for specific medical reasons are unable to attend school. And it's our responsibility to provide them with edu, their free and appropriate education that that meets their needs. And I I could see that expanding much broader in the coming years that if you've got a student that that can't be at school for whatever reason, whether it be because of their own medical needs or the medical needs of a family member, that it's our responsibility to provide that free and appropriate education and and to overcome those obstacles. I think technology really helps much more than it did ten years ago. And so we're really going to have to explore many more options related to that. Some of you may be familiar, but others may not. There are options now available to provide a virtual robot in the classroom that could follow a student's schedule while the student is at home. And so those are, that's just one example. But I, like I said, I think if you'd asked me this ten years ago, I would have said, boy, that's going to be a tough mountain to climb, but I think technology has really helped us. I would say the the basic answer to your question, though, trustee Decker, is our responsibility is to provide that appropriate education, no matter what situation the student might be in.
Did that answer your question, trustee Decker?
Oh, I think it's a fantastic answer. I I really appreciate Dr. Watson saying that we don't quite know yet, too. And certainly, we're not the only district that's wrestling with kind of from a legal and ethical perspective, what what it is that we need to be doing. I don't in any way doubt that our hope and intention is to try to keep students as safe as possible and get them the best education that we can. But what that's going to look like, we just don't know yet. So it's a great answer based on what we know now, if that's for sure.
So if and every, if anyone has another question on this, this, of course, is the topic we're going to be discussing in far greater detail on Friday in terms of what decision the board makes about continuing with remote education for the rest of the semester or not. And I think Dr. And I thank Dr. Watson for letting us know what it would look like on one side of that decision and, you know, what it would look like on the other side of that definition, which is what we've already talked about much earlier in the meeting with Dr. Guest and Karen Allen and and that information. So does anyone else have a question or a comment in this area? Or should we move on to the talk about what to do, I think, about graduation is the last specified topic? I'm not seeing anyone indicating a question here. So, Dr. Watson, do you want to address that last identified topic that's under the board work session?
Yes, I will. I I think I I've mentioned this before to you all, but this is really a sensitive topic. We want to honor our seniors. We want to find the best way to honor our seniors. We want to make sure that that we are careful with this topic and plan accordingly. And we've taken our time on this. And part of the reason we have sort of taken our time on this is we don't really know what the restrictions will be at the end of May or the first part of June. We can make some predictions that we will likely be in phase two. And we can do some planning around what happens if we're in phase two or what happens if we're in phase three. We can also talk about what we already know in terms of some other things in our community. So I think it's probably most appropriate, if you look at page 39 on the, in the board agenda, and that list of general considerations. I think it's probably important you you understand sort of what we're faced with. So that first bullet, no matter when we hold the ceremony, it's going to look a lot different than it has in years past. And I say that because if you imagine the graduation ceremonies we've had before with, you know, 3,000 people in attendance inside the Adams Center, I can't see any situation where that would be accepted or allowed by our county health department regarding the restrictions that are already in place around large gatherings. So I can't imagine any situation where we would be able to do that. I do, I would say, though, that we need to watch those restrictions very carefully. And so you can see as you go down that list of considerations, you know, if the, if we're still in phase one with no more than 10 people and social distancing, that's a consideration we would have to take in into account. Right now, the local health department, so I've had a lot of suggestions for our community to consider an outdoor ceremony, which I think is a valid suggestion, although I would worry about Montana weather and how it can change so quickly. But even even right now, an outdoor ceremony would be tough because our our current restrictions on out, even outdoor settings, are groups of no larger than 25 people. That that was, that was put out by our health department just last week. If we move into phase two, then we have some other options. Crowd restrictions are increased to no more than 50. And then we could end up moving back to phase one, just playing it out for the next couple of weeks. So I think it is important that we watch this really carefully. It's going to be difficult for us to predict what it's going to be like in late May or early June. So what what I provided for you is some contingency planning that we've been examining and considering around the ceremony. So the next few pages, you can see there what some of the contingencies are if we were in phase one or phase two or phase three. I think it's valuable to point out, as I said before, it's likely not going to look the same way it's looked like before. No matter what plan we come up with, and we will come back to the board on May 12th with a definitive plan. But no matter what plan we come up with, it's going to have to be approved by the local health department, specifically our county health officer. We've had discussions with the other double A superintendents about what their ceremonies would look like. And many of them are in the same sort of boat that we're in, except that some of them have earlier ceremonies, so billings ceremonies are in late May. And so they've already made a decision on their ceremonies to have small in-person ceremonies, less than eight people, and having multiple ceremonies spread out across several days that would bring graduates in in small groups, like eight or less. They would graduate those eight students and then they would move on to the next group. And so you can imagine it would take multiple days to get through a class of 300 kids. But that's just one example. That's where billings has kind of landed, based on what the current knowledge is that they have. And I have a weekly meeting with the double A superintendents. And this is a standing topic that we've been discussing and trying to explore what some of the options are. Outside of graduation ceremonies, I think it is important to point out, no matter what we do for the ceremony, I think there's 100 different ways we can honor our students over the course of the next four weeks. And I, there's a lot of great suggestions out there, and that's something we'll continue to look forward to and move forward on. So, you know, yard signs or pictures of our students out in the community or figuring other ways, really responsible and wonderful ways to recognize our graduates. I think we'll continue to work on that and implement those things. But this particular document is specific to the actual ceremony. But I wanted to point out, there's much more we can do and we should do for our graduates beyond just the ceremony. So I'll stop there and see if you have comments, questions, or concerns.
It looks like trustee Smith has a comment.
I I do. Thank you, Dr. Watson, for that. I'm I'm in a unique situation. I do have a senior in high school, and I also have a senior in college. And so this is kind of a double whammy for me. But we, and I, and and being in the situation that I'm in, I understand that when we talk about the ceremony and the the, if you will, pomp and circumstance, it's 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 about the the students, but it's also about the parents, and it's also about the community and everyone that involves it. So I I really appreciate the efforts that you're talking about, Dr. Watson, for for all, for for recognizing all that. One thing that I'm not seeing here is any kind of feedback or 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 input from the actual students. And I don't know if Isaac is on the call still, but I I know that he's, I believe he's a senior, right? If I'm not wrong. And but but we, we have, I haven't even thought to ask, what what do you want? What what could I possibly do? And of course, he probably wouldn't answer me because I'm his dad. But but if somebody else asked him, maybe they would. But but my point is, I would love to get some info from the seniors to see what they want. And I really appreciate you pointed out signs and 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 honoring and notify or noticing, I should say, who they are and what they've done, because this is really an amazing accomplishment that they have completed. But can we, can we get some of their input? And if there's anything I can do to help that, let me know.
Yeah, so I I think we should let Isaac give us some thoughts as well. But I, before he does that, and I appreciate the question, I want to make sure that I add this because I totally forgot this, but and and we'll add it to the document. I think it's an important point. Early on in the process, we were talking about producing a virtual ceremony that, you know, we could, we could broadcast on that day. And we heard, and it wasn't me, it was our high school principals, they heard loud and clear from the students that while a virtual ceremony, you know, might be okay, they weren't weren't likely to participate. They probably wouldn't watch it. And so we could spend a whole lot of time producing a virtual ceremony that we would broadcast, but it's likely that the students really wouldn't be interested in watching or participating, which was a huge message for me, because that sort of changed our thinking. It was like, okay, if we're going to put our energies then into something, we need to do, we need to put our energies into something that's more in person. Not to say that we couldn't do a virtual, maybe a, maybe video of this ceremony and then provide sort of a video afterwards that we could give to every kid, sort of a, like a a virtual yearbook. But it really changed our shifting, because we were moving away, we're now moving away from that spending a whole lot of time on a virtual ceremony and now talking about, what are we going to do to provide an in-person ceremony with the restrictions that are in place? So that's one way that we've sort of pivoted based on student feedback. But I know our high school principals are getting a lot more feedback. So I I will bring that back to the discussion for you all, based on what our high school principals are hearing. But I I would love to hear from Isaac, now that we have sort of a captive audience with with Isaac.
Thank you, Rob. Before Isaac's piece, that's exactly what I was looking for, and I appreciate it. And Isaac, if you are on, if you do have anything to add, please do.
And before Isaac does, I want to make some suggestions, so we don't put Isaac on the spot, but he is on. I already had Lenora send me the list of all the student trustees, and I had planned to call them all and find out if they would be willing to get some feedback so that they, when they come to their final school board meeting on May 12th virtually, that not only would we virtually acknowledge them for all their services here, but they might include in any report they give, you know, some information they would have gathered. And certainly, we can coordinate with the principals at the schools as well. I think the student trustees do a good job of contacting the principals anyway. But I already have the list of the student trustees and was planning on making those calls. But I wanted to wait until after this, you know, work session before I started calling them all. But if I have preliminary ideas, I just want to let him know that I would be reaching out to him again in a personal call, so.
Perfect. Thank, and Isaac, I'm sorry, I hate to cut you off one more time. Thank you, Marcia, for doing that. And and if you do ask for that, I I if the student, if you're going to ask for input from the student trustees, I don't know how they do this. And I, and I know we have great student trustees and all of them. But but if they can get input from, I know that the kids are much better at getting information through social media. But but I, what I would do is ask them to reach out, not not just to to give their kind of personal things, but also to reach out.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you for that.
I totally, that was my total plan, was to have them take the temperature of their buildings as to the seniors and find out what kind of options they are looking for. And then, like, trustee Decker has a question, but let's let Isaac, you know, give us any preliminary thoughts you have, Isaac, and then we hope to hear from you again on May 12th, unless things get even crazier somehow.
I can provide some input, I think.
Oh, good.
But I I know we'd all really like to have a graduation. Like, that's the number one priority for most everyone I've talked to. And I'm like in-person graduation. And I know it's been suggested to have it outside, and that's the best idea I've personally heard so far. I haven't talked to too many other seniors about it. But otherwise, anything that we might have been hoping for, for our seniors, like, our senior spring, like, sports and stuff, isn't going to be possible. And I think we've accepted that at this point. I can't think of much else besides just hoping to be able to get physical yearbooks.
That's a good point, too. Thanks for noting that, Isaac.
No problem.
And then trustee Decker, you had a question?
Yeah, when we talk about phase three in the contingency planning, the least restrictive phase, I've seen a couple of different public health sort of definitions of what phase three means, one of which is that there's a vaccine available and the population is vaccinated. And the other is more is sooner than that, let's just say that. And so if we're talking about phase three as being that there's a vaccine and the population is largely vaccinated, and that that's the first time at which a large-scale gathering, bigger than 50 people, is possible, then clearly, we're not talking about something like that this year, unfortunately. However, if we're talking about phase three meaning something a little different, then it might make sense to consider, like, as possibility, something like scheduling a graduation at the point at which we can move to phase three, when that happens, like, keeping a contingency, even if everyone who could come to an in-person big gathering in November, who happened to be in, was able to come even at that late date, that kind of thing. So when we're asking people what they would like, it might be a good idea to make sure that we're being clear to people about what kinds of options we're even, like, are even kind of on the table or or with what, like, with what contingencies around that, so that people are are able to to say, well, given that these are really the options for what is likely to be possible between now and August, I really feel like this would would feel the most emotionally resonant for me. This feels the best. Or given that these are the options. But if people are holding out hope, as I've seen in many of the public comments, that we're going to be able to do a very large-scale meeting if we just, you know, wait a month or two or three. So we just, I think, I'm not sure if it's a question, yes, it is a question about what phase three means in this contingency plan, but then also about how we're going to be asking people about their preferences.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So I want to be clear that the phase three that's referenced in here is when the governor decides, you know, with his advisors that we can move to phase three. I I don't, I don't believe that it it follows the same guidance as CDC's guidance, that we can only move to phase three if there's a vaccine. I don't believe the governor's guidance says that, but I will, I will check on that and and follow up on that. The one thing I want to say, though, and this is a big however, and it's it's not something that people really want to hear, but we need to, we need to be clear about this. There's, there's, the concern I have about postponing the ceremony is when to postpone it to, for a couple of reasons. It doesn't appear like any time in the next six months, and I say that just based on all the things that have gotten canceled. But it doesn't appear like in the next six months that we're going to be in any sort of situation where there's going to be a large group pulled together. If you look at all of the things across the state that have been canceled, all the planning that's taking place regarding big events, even in our own community that are being canceled. My my reservation for postponing is, I feel like we'd be constantly waiting to see what what the next thing is and hoping that the virus doesn't come back. And even if, even if we did host something in December, like, maybe perhaps when the students came back from college, that there, the virus could be back in our community and we would still be, you know, in the same boat of trying to postpone it. My recommendation will be to do something on June 6th, the best that we can with the restrictions that we have, to have something in person on June 6th. I don't know what that's going to look like. But I do think we have to be realistic with our community. It's not going to be a large gathering. Even if we're in phase three, I could still see, based on the conversations that I've had with our public health officer, she's not going to allow any mass gatherings either, even if they're outside, even if we're in phase three. So we need to be open and honest and transparent about that and start planning for something that looks different. And I know that that's not a popular thing, but I think now is the time we have to be honest and transparent about that and realistic in saying, let's plan for something that we know we can do that's within the restrictions that still gives the students an in-person, students and families, an in-person experience.
I just want to say thank you so much for that. I think when we're talking with people about their preferences and hopes and desires, it's so important to make sure that we also convey regret for what isn't, but also real positivity around what we can do, given the the restrictions that we're under, and not not act as all options are on the table, but but try to look for the best possible option that that really, in fact, is. So thanks for that.
And trustee Smith?
Well, I I kind of want to echo what what trustee Decker just said. I I really appreciate Dr. Watson addressing the 600-pound gorilla and and saying that, look, this, this is the situation that we have. And this is, I I think, I think not having false hopes of of thinking, oh, maybe in two weeks, and then maybe in two weeks. And and really, it's important to acknowledge that what we have is what we have. The other thing is, I know my son, who isn't senior in high school, he hates us. And as everyone else does, it's a, it's a crappy situation, and nobody likes it. and nobody likes it. But you know what? This is a tough generation, tougher than we think it is. And I I know that they are going to step up and 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 do something with this. So I really appreciate you, Dr. Watson, putting that out and saying this, this is really what we have. Let's not make some false hopes there. I I just want to say I appreciate that.
And I actually had a question. Can you guys hear me?
I
Okay, it just, my computer screen went weird. So just anecdotally, I know just from being on campus at the law school, lots of discussions about what to do graduation there. And one of the things ironically was pointed out was that the reason that UVM started to emulate what MSU had been doing and having it at winter and a spring graduation is because none of the kids that graduate in the winter come back for the spring. They're just pretty much done. And so I I I don't imagine high school students who are going on into so many walks of life, you know, something later is going to work very well. But two, I just wondered if Dr. Watson, if if there's a way to look into staggering the days, so it's not not all on the same day. But for example, you know, Willard's pretty manageable, Sealy Swan might be somewhat manageable. And then look at Thursday, Friday, Saturday of the week. It would have all been on Saturday. If that might help form some of the possible options, that it's not all on the graduation date they were expecting.
Yeah, we will, we will likely have to come back with a plan that has smaller group sizes, and depending on what those group sizes are, will dictate how many days it'll take for each particular school. So we will have staggering just to get the group sizes down.
Any other questions from anybody?
I have a question.
Okay, trustee Bobo?
I received an email from a parent who has a senior at Sealy Swan. And her request just seemed very reasonable and appropriate, that we not do like a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all approach for graduation ceremonies, because Sealy has 19 seniors. And so by default, they're going to have a smaller size, smaller crowd size anyways. And she seemed open to, you know, all the different varieties of ways we could do it, but she would like to just know that whatever is decided for the larger schools, if the smaller schools could maybe have something a little different with and still adhere by the guidelines.
Yeah, that's a valid, that's a valid point, and I have discussed that several times with the Sealy principal and understanding that he's going to have a little bit different variation than we have for the larger schools, and we're fine with that, just as long as we're still living within the restrictions.
And I would echo that as to Willard, because they always have a unique, you know, individual graduation and can also participate in the bigger ones, but I would want to make sure that we're talking with Kevin as well.
Yep.
And any other questions or comments from trustees? I see we're getting close to nine o'clock, and I I'm sure we're going to be having conversations about how COVID-19 changed 2020. Or wow, oh, trustee Decker has one more question.
Yeah, just just one more thing. You know, I know that when we think about ways to celebrate the students and so on, I can imagine it being something that all of the many community partners that are involved in MCPS will be really interested and willing to step up about. There have been times before where, like, the downtown business community has really stepped up to demonstrate appreciation for a variety of different things, or lots of lots of possibilities. I'm picturing, you know, billboards with like students' pictures or slideshows at the Missoulaian homepage of graduates with their families, local photographers who've taken pictures of the graduates outside in their caps and gowns, and, you know, social media slideshows of the graduates and their accomplishments, kind of like the Sealy Lake graduation slideshow, actually, with the baby picture and the grown-up picture. And lots of different things like that that could really end up being pretty unique and special, and that the district wouldn't necessarily have to do alone. Because I think this is something where a lot of community partners are going to be really eager to help and jump in.
Thank you for that, trustee Decker. I think that's a really important thing to consider. Thank you so much. Anyone else with any final comments? I'm just double checking the chat. My computer keeps wiggling around on me. I don't see anyone else. And so at this point, as you know, we'll have our meeting on Friday at noon. I believe the tentative agenda has two items. One is a a policy, I think, as Dr. Watson said, I think there's one more 1900 policy coming our way. Is that correct, Dr. Watson?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Then and then the second question will be because of the governor indicating schools could choose to go back to their buildings on the 7th, we will be reaching a decision about whether we, as a board, will make what kind of decision we will make concerning that. So we will have another discussion on that particular point as well. And I want to thank everyone for being here and for persevering through this interesting mechanism of allowing public communication and public comment and board friendship. So thank you so much. And with that, unless there's anything final, I see that there are a lot of people saying thank you and leaving the meetings. So I'm going to go ahead and leave the meeting, too, and I'll let Hatton wrap it up in whatever way she needs to for the electronic record.
Thank you all. I will be stopping the recording and stopping the live stream, and then the complete recording of this board meeting will be on the MCPS YouTube channel, hopefully within 24 hours.
Okay, and I'll just pass along, Heidi was having